And welcome to the Cedar Falls Committee, the whole meeting is March 19th, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order. We have four items this evening to cover. One is recognition of a Board of Adjustment member, Craig Schwarfeger. We also have Water Reclamation Operations Overview, the 2018 Public Works and Parks Work Plan, and Bills and Payroll. I'd like to begin with this special recognition of one of the city's longest-serving volunteers. Craig Schwarfeger has faithfully served in the Cedar Falls Board of Adjustment for just over 29 years, and now he's retiring. Can you call it retiring if you're volunteering and you stop? But suffice to say, we all would probably appreciate what he has seen through the years, passed through with that kind of capacity of serving the city. And while we appreciate all of our volunteers who serve the great city we live in, I thought it necessary and deserving to present a couple of items to Craig. So first of all, I'm going to have him come up, and I'll read through a distinguished service award plaque that we will present to him on behalf of myself, council, and the city staff. And then City Administrator Ron Gaines will have a challenge coin to present. So if you don't mind Craig's coming on up, and I'm just going to read this, I'll pass it over to you, but it does say, "City of Cedar Falls presents to Craig Schwarfeger a distinguished service award in appreciation of the contribution to the city of Cedar Falls while serving on the Board of Adjustment awarded this 31st day of March 2018." So congratulations and thank you so much for your service.
Mayor and council, I'd also like to present Craig with one of our Cedar Falls challenge coins, recognizing excellence, honoring service, and outstanding performance. One of the things that the Board of Adjustment, and these are my words, not Craig's, but and sometimes I think the Board of Adjustment's a double-edged sword. You don't necessarily meet every month, but in a lot of times you have the most difficult hearings that you'll have in front of you. They're oftentimes very controversial and difficult decisions, but I think he is one that has done the duty very well over 29 years, two floods in there. So congratulations and thank you very much.
I would just like to say I'm very humbled by their recognition, so thank you all very much. But the one thing I would like to say is I really give a lot of credit to the staff over those years because they've done an excellent job of preparing the staff reports, and it would be, makes our job a lot easier. So with that, thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Moving on to our second item is a Water Reclamation Operations Overview. I believe Mike's here to give us an update on that.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time tonight. Give me an opportunity to go quickly over what our division does in community development. We're the wastewater treatment plant or the water reclamation division in the city. So what are our goals? Of course, one of the main things that we do is we collect and transport wastewater to get it to the treatment plant. The goal there is to do that without interruptions to service to our citizens. And then we try to identify and avoid issues that could lead to blockages or problems that that could cause, and try to do this in an efficient and cost-effective manner. Once we get the water to the treatment plant, our goal is to treat it to the highest quality possible. We do have a well-functioning plant in the city of Cedar Falls. It does what it's designed to do. Our goal is always to meet what our permit levels are, but above that, we try to produce the highest quality of water that goes to the Cedar River as possible. One of the other main things that we do is we quickly, try to quickly respond to citizens' issues if people are having problems with their service. Whether it's the city's main or not, our goal is to be there, respond to those issues within 30 minutes, and identify and hopefully resolve that within 60 minutes, and the overwhelming majority of the time, we do meet those time limit goals. In the last five years, we probably average about 50 calls a year from citizens. Previously, 10, 15 years ago, that was at least double that. I think that speaks to a lot of work that's been done in the collection system over the last several years. We made some good improvements. The Water Reclamation Department does work underneath a state permit. Initially, the permit was, we were regulated by the Iowa State Department of Health. Early 20th century, 1930s, 1940s, there weren't a lot of wastewater treatment plants in the state of Iowa. The state health department started to recognize the public health issue that was there. There's a lot of wastewater just simply went to rivers or maybe lakes, and that untreated wastewater became a public health issue, and that is fundamentally what we do and what we're for, to improve public health. It's a very important part of public health improvement. It's a big benefit that we provide. Our current permit system is issued by the DNR under the authority of the EPA. The EPA was formed in 1970s, early 1970, or in 1972, and then took over regulating wastewater treatment in the United States. Our permit is under DNR, under the authority of the EPA, and what that really means is that we're subject to inspections from the US EPA and the DNR, and those inspections do happen on a regular basis. It's a five-year permit cycle. Right now, we're in a current permit renewal cycle, which we will be doing a lot of, and are doing a lot of extra testing to see what's in our water that goes to the river, see if there's anything that's shown up since the last test cycle or permit cycle, see if there's anything that we'd be responsible for monitoring and removing that shouldn't be there. What our permit continues is basically everything that regulates everything that we do, describes what we need to do, whether that's the land application of our solids. We have some industrial pretreatment program monitoring that we do. There are some required ordinances that come out of that permit, and of course, it regulates the quality of water that goes to the Cedar River. So a little bit about our budget. One thing I think it's important to understand is that our budget is not a tax. It's an enterprise fund, which is a fee charged for users of the service. The more water used, the more you're charged, so it's not a tax. And our annual budget, it's a fairly large budget for the city, covers, our annual budget covers things like lab supplies, supplies for the plant, small repairs, personnel, things in the collection system for lift stations and maybe root control. Some of the bigger projects in the CIP, some of the short-term things that we are working on are, will be in the very near future. The Dry Run Creek Sanitary Sewer Pipe, when is, is just about done, that should be completed here fairly soon. It's a two-phase project, and it's a large pipe, provides more capacity for the southern part of the city, and replaced an aging line that definitely needed to be addressed soon before it caused us more issues. Some of the other small things or short-term things that we're doing, we work on INI removal, which is getting the clean water out of the system that can interfere with the treatment plant process and the efficiency of it. And then some maintenance that we're just not able to do with the staff that we have, some work at the plant. For example, there's some coating projects that are coming up this spring. Some of the long-range or the larger items, one of the items that we're purchasing in the next few years is another standby generator. We have a handful already, and we need some more for our lift stations in the treatment plant. We have a digester rehab project that's staged in our process. That's kind of a weakness in our, in our process right now. That's in FY '20 and '21. It's a, it's a large project to rehabilitate those tanks and get that process working better. And then down the road, and we'll know more as the new permit comes in, what we'll have to do with the, the large item is the nutrient reduction that we have five years out, and if, if we need to do something, it's in the, in the CIP now. But we'll know more what we have to do with that project as the permit is written. It'll be in place early next year. Moving on to what we have for staff there, we have 14 employees at the wastewater treatment plant and the collection system. We have 11 full-time people and three part-time people. There's two of us that work as management there. We have four operators, a full-time mechanic and lab technician, and we have three full-time and three part-time maintenance workers. So what our staff does, so for the management, it's myself and Tyler Griffin is the plant supervisor. We have licenses. Turns out, you do have to have a little bit of education, a little bit of experience to do this, so we do have operator's license issued by the state. One of the big jobs that, or part of our work is coordinate the work of the rest of the employees. As you can imagine, there's a lot of reporting requirements, whether it's on the water that goes to the river, the land application of the solids. We have monthly reports, biannual reports, annual reports. There's a lot of data that needs to be kept, a lot of record-keeping with that. And then another item, Director Rodenbeck's not here tonight, but as you've seen in her budget talks, we're a big part of the budget in Cedar Falls, and it takes a lot of decision-making and coordinating with others to try to keep those expenses down for the treatment plant to meet the needs of our budget with keeping the plant running as it's supposed to and efficiently. Just working with those funds in the long term and the short term takes a little bit of planning. So on to the staff, other staff, we have four plant operators that work at the treatment plant. They're there every day of the week. They work with a lot of equipment, a lot of large equipment, a lot of high-energy equipment, and they help to manage the water and the solids that are separated from the water, get processed through the plant. A big part of their day and their week is preventive maintenance. Keeping the plant running efficiently is an important thing to do, keep it operating like it should. Preventive maintenance is doing the small repairs before they become bigger and keeping those costs down for those larger repairs. And then our four operators are part of our, they, they also do emergency response both at the plant and the collection system. We have an alarm system that notifies us when anything that needs to be addressed off hours. So they're, they, they come in and respond to those emergencies. We have one lab technician, as stated, we have, that's Patty is our lab tech. She's just been there for a few years, but our lab is a state-certified lab, the University of Hygienic Lab. We do, our permit does have a lot of required testing in it, so that, of course, is what we do, but we also do a lot of extra sampling and testing just to make sure that the plant is operating as it should, if any changes need to be made in our daily operations of the treatment plant. We have one full-time mechanic at the plant. It's a, it's a large plant to maintain. He's a very busy person. He's a very qualified person. Chris Robinson is our mechanic. He's a very qualified mechanic, very hard-working person, can't stress that enough. A big part of his job, preventive maintenance, making sure that all the pumps and the motors and the electrical and electronic systems are working both at the treatment plant and the collection system. And Chris also responds when you have an emergency. Sometimes it takes his expertise to solve problems that we have at the plant or at lift stations. One of the things that he does, that he kind of goes above and beyond, just to give him a little recognition, is he takes upon himself to make improvements in the plant, whether it's a new pump or a new control system. And a good example of that is a parish lift station. This is on Parish Street. It's a very small lift station, but on the picture on the slide, you can see that it's, it's not a very sophisticated control system there. There's a red light. We were relying on neighbors to see that light and then call us if we had a problem there. There's a time delay with all that, and we were starting to have problems with the older, outdated electrical equipment for this lift station. And Chris rebuilt this station basically from scratch. There are a lot of improvements in that. We have a much better alarm system. It's quicker to call us. It's a lot more reliable. And we had an alarm there the other day, as a matter of fact, and we got there before any real problems occurred. So it's just, it's really nice to have that updated. I think it's a little better looking. I think we made ourselves a little bit better neighbor for those residents in the area. It sits in somebody's yard. When we did the mechanical improvements, we wanted to make it look just a little bit better so that we are a better neighbor. As far as our maintenance workers, we have one that is primarily tasked with applying our solids to farm fields. Aside from the water that comes out of the plant, solids are the other product that comes out of the plant. It's a highly-processed material, real similar to compost, but it's a very beneficial to farmland, and that's where it goes for probably 95% or more of the wastewater treatment plants in the United States. It's, like I said, it's beneficial to it. It provides a lot of soil conditioning, and it's very good nutrient for the farmland. Where we apply that, this is the Sartori lands. The city owns about just under 400 acres, the Sartori Trust, and we manage that, what gets put on there. The advantage to the city of Cedar Falls is the, with the Sartori product, property, is it keeps our costs really low. A lot of wastewater treatment plants spend a lot more money than we do because they have to either rent the land or, another issue would be, you might be going from one farmer in one year and then to a next, and just keeping that planning down the road, we know this is going to be a stable. As long as we have this land, it's a stable cost for us. And one of the other benefits is environmentally, we get to call the shots on this land. We, we just went through a lease process, and the farmer there is very environmentally responsible. We don't want nutrients migrating through the soil and ending up in the water there. That's something that we take a little pride in, and it's nice to have that land and have it be our land and be able to call those shots. So continuing with our maintenance workers, we have five more maintenance workers that work in the collection system primarily at the lift stations. They do televising of our lines, cleaning of the lines, and then emergency response 24 hours a day. We operate 12 different lift stations throughout the city. Our largest one is 17th Street Lift Station. You may be familiar with that one. It's behind the Panther, across from Mulligan's. That is by far and away the largest one that we have, pumps about 60% of our flow to the treatment plant. And then the smallest one is similar in size to the one that I showed you earlier, the Parish. We have one maintenance worker that takes care of these, primarily is just one that takes care of the maintenance, the regular maintenance and any upgrades that happen with these. The person that does that is, has, has done some electrical upgrades, and we've done some building upgrades with our lift station. So we have one person that does that, again, spread fairly thin on that end, but does a good job of it. Continuing with the collection system, we clean the storm sewer as well, but primarily the sanitary sewer. We have about 200 miles of sanitary sewer mains in the city of Cedar Falls. Our goal there is to clean 50 miles per year and get through our system about every four years. That's an important part that is required by the EPA, and it's, it's something that very few cities are able to do, is get through their system that often. And what that does is helps identify problems in the system before they become bigger, maybe cause blockages, and then maybe cause backups in people's homes or, or other issues similar to that. The other part that helps with that is televising. Well, and on the bottom left is our crew putting the, it's a high-pressure line, a jet, water jet cleaner that cleans the line, then has a vacuum. If there's debris in there like rock or gravel that doesn't belong there, that they can remove. And on the right side is our TV crew there, installing a camera into the line. And during the warmer months of the year, our guys are out televising. Our goal there is only about 10 miles a year. It's a much slower process. We were able to get a little bit more than that the last several years, but what that does, we can see, we have a camera on a tractor that we send down the pipe, and we can inspect the line, see if there's cracks or holes or root infiltration, and identify those problems so that we can address it through some other maintenance issues before they become a bigger problem. Again, it's all part of that goal of just getting that water there, getting it away from residents, getting away from businesses, and getting it where it belongs to the treatment plant so it can be treated there. Some of the things that we do on our collection system with this information, we have an annual lining project, which is an in-place repair of the lines to take care of those roots or cracks. We repair and replace manholes on a regular basis. And then root control is another item that we spot with a camera. If we have roots in lines, we can, we have an outside contractor do root control application for us. And then the emergency response, all of our maintenance workers respond to issues in the treatment, in the collection system, emergencies, whether it's a home backing up or a lift station with a problem. So I went kind of through that pretty quick, but hope it's just a quick overview of, of what we do and what our staff is. Going through this, writing this up, just a little bit of history about Cedar Falls and the wastewater treatment in our, in our city. Kind of interesting, I thought, in 1939 is the first blueprints for wastewater treatment plant in Cedar Falls. Before that, there was, there was no treatment plant. As you probably know, the city was incorporated or became a city in the 1850s and 1860s, so that's a long time, 80, 90 years before we had wastewater treatment plant, but there were sanitary mains in place. A good example is on West First Street. The lines there were put in 1910 and 1911, and they're still in place. We coordinate the, with the road construction and engineering department to replace those lines, so when that line is reconstructed, we'll redo those lines and bring them up to newer standards and hopefully get another 100 years out of those lines, and hopefully we'll get that done before we have any issues there. But like I said, there wasn't a treatment plant here, and the first drawings that I have are from 1939 blueprints. And then from there, we had some expansions, major expansions, I'll call them, in 1952, 1962, 1985, and then the latest was in 1912. And in between each of those times, those weren't the only times the plant's been improved. It's a continual thing to prove, improve the plant. We do either electrical or electronic upgrades as needed. That's something that's been going on for the last several years. Pump replacement, new types of pumps, those type of upgrades. We put covers on the treatment plant in the, in, at some of the tanks in the meantime. Then another thing that happens on a regular basis, or has happened, are our lift station upgrades. One of the things I think the previous managers can be really proud of is, I've worked for the city for a long time, but since I've been here, there's only one original lift station. That's Cedar Heights Lift Station on the south end of town. Every other lift station has been replaced, and actually, one of them's been replaced twice since I've been here. And I think that really just speaks to the efforts that were put forward by the previous managers, both Bruce Sorensen and Lyle Kruger. There's a lot of effort put in our collection system, and, and I think it's in really good shape, and some of the stuff that we do now is just to make sure it's managed in that way. So the blueprint that I found had a map of 1939 Cedar Falls, which I found really interesting. There was not a treatment plant at that time, and the plans were to put in three treatment plants, and I'm not sure about the one at Pfeiffer Springs Park or Pfeiffer Park, if it was put in. It was gone by the time I started with the city, and that was basically a glorified septic system there. But there was a discharge previously right to Dry Run Creek with untreated wastewater. There was another one where our Park Drive Lift Station is at the bottom of Lookout Park, Lookout Hill, and that was in place. There was a small treatment plant when I started. That was replaced in 1990, 1991 with a lift station to get the water to the treatment plant. And then the, the third plant would have been the main, what they call here, the main plant, which is where the treatment plant exists today. Some of the interesting things about this, just looking at this, I, it looks to me like it's the complete city limits of the city. There's a lot of things on here that I found interesting. The Teachers College is on there, just the, the city limits and, and just the, some of the notations on there, what are in different areas. And in 1939, before we had a wastewater treatment plant, we did have a municipal water, an electric plant, and a gas plant, but we didn't have any wastewater treatment plant. And one of the other interesting things I found was, we didn't have a wastewater treatment plant, but Washington Golf Course was actually in place at that time, so. Back then than, than what the river turned into. So just quickly, the wastewater treatment plant that was designed in 1939 was a real simple. You can see it's just a set of four, six tanks, a real simple design, but it was a big improvement on what was in place on the upper right-hand corner, where there's a little Y in the pipe. There's a pipe that comes out of a structure and it says, "Present Outfall," and that was where all downtown and First Street came to, and then turned the corner and went directly to the river untreated. So it was a, it was a big improvement in 1939 to start treating wastewater. This is, I guess that's a little hard to see. It's a little easier on my printed copy, but this is an overview of what the treatment plant looks like after the 2012 expansion. We didn't really expand that much. We replaced one tank, and we did add some solids handling to give us more flexibility in our solids handling, and we added some disinfection process. So we disinfect our water before it goes to the river during, between March and November when it's a higher impact on the ecology of the river. But you can see it's a lot more complicated, just goes through the process a lot more, so. Yeah, there you can see it a little better. So there's a lot more there now, a lot more tanks, a lot more buildings. Well, that was a quick overview of the treatment plant. This is a little bit older picture, gives you an idea what the tanks look like under the covers that are now in place, but certainly if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or try to. And I've had some interest in tours in the past and just recently, and I'd invite you all to come down anytime to come get a firsthand look at what we do down there. We're there during the day, but Tyler and myself would be more than happy to do it at your convenience, whether it's an evening or a weekend. But we're always happy to give tours down there, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thanks, Mike. Anything for Mike this evening? Mr. Green?
I think Mr. Green, it's a fascinating presentation. You mentioned earlier about how you're looking at about 50 calls a year, down from about 100. Is there a common thread of those calls that we're having now, and like, has some sort of situation?
We're really pretty lucky, and if you go back and look at the calls, the percentage of actual blockages in the city's main were much higher, too. Ranged 15 to 20% in the past, and now we're probably down to 5%, maybe one or two calls a year actually is a problem in the main. The biggest problem probably is roots, and if, you know, debris that ended up in the line that accumulated, so if we didn't get, you know, to a line, that's, that's not very common. Roots are the most common thing that would be an obstruction in the line. But our sliplining program that we've been doing for 21 years now is, that's one of the things that we try to address, so we're not paying a company to come in and do that root control every two or three years and get rid of those roots. We'd rather just line it's a little cheaper, it's a long-term solution to that problem. Most of the calls end up being on the service line, which is not city property, it's the homeowners. But it, you know, so a lot of times we go out there and we may say, "This is not the city's problem," but it's not a lot of fun to have something like that happen to you. So we're pretty aware that anything that we can do to help that happened today, just being able to go out and talk to them and let them know, "This is, you know, a service line issue, and this is the way you should proceed," is, you know, most people appreciate somebody from the city being there and describing what's happening in a, in a good way to attack it.
Anything further from council?
Again, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Tyler, for coming as well. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the 2018 Public Works and Parks Work Plan, when Mark Riplinger's
All right. Thanks, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're going to go through annually what we put together for our work plan for the Public Works and Parks Division, and also some information, what recreation's doing out in the field, and also visitors and tourism. So get started here, make sure I know what I'm doing. So here, I don't know if we can get on the screen, Danny. Each year, we, we hear requests from the city council, from our constituents, from people in the public and staff. We all work together to try to put together a work plan, not only things that are in a CIP, but also are certain areas where the public would like to see some small improvements. We're able to do those sorts of things if we're able to get grant dollars, private donations, if we just have staff time to take care of some of those things. So some of the things you might not see in the CIP have been in the back burner for a while, and then when funding and staffing comes in, in place, we're able to take care of some of those things. So some of those things you'll see in the work plan tonight. This is included in your packet. I just put it up there to let you know, there's right now four pages in our work plan. You can't see this, but it was included in your packet to give you a little bit, little bit more information of what we have planned this year in our various public properties. One of the first projects you'll see, this is a cooperative project between the Rotary Club, Friends of Clay Street Park, private donations, and the city is to upgrade that park. We moved the basketball court a few years ago. We built a detention facility, and this is a concept that was put together by Brad Leeper and his architect firm of a possible location for a new shelter. This would be on the west side of Clay Street Park. This is a concept that they put together, pretty simple design. We wanted to be able to see into it when we could from the street, but it also will protect people from the weather. And right now, we have a metal shelter out there. It's been out there for years and years and years, and so once this gets put up, we're going to take that metal shelter down. And so, once this gets put up, we're going to take that metal shelter down. Staff spent this winter, between cleanup snows and other jobs, staining the beams you see there. This picture was taken about a week and a half or so ago. They're going to start putting the sheeting on the roof and putting the, they'll work with the Rotary Club, who's going to donate some time to put some of the side panels on and we're hoping that we'll have this facility up and going for the public within the next six to eight weeks. This is a little bit unique because of where it is in the parks, we'll have to do a little bit of earthwork and some retaining wallwork and some rail work, just to make sure that it's safe for the public to use. There's a little bit of a grade issue there. Another project that City Council's heard about is the Place to Play Park, this is in Green Hill Park. The proponents have raised over six hundred thousand dollars for this project. We are working with Landscape Architect, which is Ritland Kuiper. In fact, we're meeting with them tomorrow to go over some of the plans and specs that are in place. There are a couple more grants out there, they're seeking another couple hundred thousand from one grant, a hundred thousand from another grant and maybe fifty from another. All of those should be known in April sometime and it's, we need to know those dollar amounts and if they're granted, because that will, that will change how the plans and specs are put together and whether we have to phase this particular project. So we will know certainly more in the next four to six weeks if we have received those and can do a full project. Just some of the amenities you see here, these are concepts. It's not just going to be a park that you just put in there on flat ground, there's going to be some contouring and some topography changes in there to make it a little bit more interesting to the people that use it. There'll be some head-in parking off the street and certainly more of the amenities that we've been talking about. Another project that City Council is aware of is the Orchard Hill Park Pickleball Courts. Funding has been achieved for those, that was a partnership between the proponents who've raised thirty-five thousand dollars, the Black Hawk County Gaming Association, which granted fifty thousand to the city, and then fifty thousand dollars in the CIP process. We are meeting with those individuals tomorrow also to start finalizing the design, whether we want an eight-court or a nine-court layout, what sort of amenities we would like to see in there, shaped structures and those sorts of things. So, once we get all of the asks and all the needs and all the wants, we'll send it out for quotes and have a little bit better idea what that is going to cost us this summer or this fall. Here's a project, if the City Council's been out to Prairie Lakes Park, John Cruz, one of the things he worked on when the Blue Zones was pretty active is introducing some fitness racks out there, fitness stations. There is four of those in Prairie Lakes Park and then one at the main, at the South Main Shelter. The Mayor and Jed Smith and myself have been working on expanding this system. So, right now, we're proposing two of those in Big Woods Lake, these would be near the Recreation Trail, two of those in Washington Park, and then two of those up at the U and I Messer Smith Field. Right now, we're looking at donations funding those. And the two in Washington Park, now we're going to work with Jed Smith up at U and I because of the proximity to the Western Home down there, we want those to be conducive to some of the seniors that want to exercise in those particular facilities. So, some of the exercises that we show will be specific to individuals that might be down at that facility. Another project we've been working on, this is, excuse me, this has been in the planning for two or three years, is updating our park signage. This sign that you see up there now was approved by the Planning, or excuse me, the Park and Recommission and the City Council in the past year or so. This is going to come out of general revenues, it is not a CIP item, it's not being paid for out of the general obligation bonds or anything like that. So, if we have money available in our operating budget, we will implement this project probably in April, May or June this year. And our goal right now is to do about ten parks or ten public, ten parks or ten public properties a year. Right now, we're getting quotes to do the public properties or to install these signs on the public properties, basically north of the river. Then next year, look at the central part of the community and then move our way down to the south. We're hoping that each year, we'd be spending about ten thousand dollars a year on the replacement of these signs for maybe a thirty thousand dollar project. Another project, signage project, been working on with Sid Morris is a more formalized Veterans Memorial Park sign. This would be located Kitty Corner from the entrance to Cedar Falls Utilities. This is, if you go by there now, there's a limestone block that says CFU on it. We want to kind of mirror that image, just create some consistency in that corridor. So Sid has went out and raised about seven thousand dollars for this project. We will be working with Weber Stone down at Cedar Rapids to put together, or get us a limestone block and we'll get it shipped up here, then we'll install that hopefully this summer. A problem that came up here in the last couple of years is the Island Park, for whatever reason, was having some ponding problems between the two entrance drives. We went in there and we tried to grade that area out to get some positive drainage, that didn't work. We tried that a couple of times, I know there were some frustrations from the public because we weren't taking care of it, but we basically found out that that rec trail that we had in there previously was holding the water back, the height of the trail was just not conducive to drainage. So, we removed that trail last fall. We will come back in and grade that area to drain better and then reinstall a recreation trail you see there in red, hopefully this summertime. Right now, it will be at just asphalt millings, it won't be an asphalt path until we get our work done, but it will be hopefully safe enough and people have the ability to write on that until we get it all up to speed. We have pit toilets at Big Woods Lake and Prairie Lakes Park, we've been talking about for a number of years, putting ceilings on this just so it keeps them a little bit cleaner, a little bit easier or a little bit more conducive for people to use. So we'll be looking at those installations this summer also, summer and fall. Anyone that's been down in the parkade understands that we're getting some deterioration to the bricks. One of the projects that the Public Works Park staff is going to work on the next couple of years is replacing any of the bricks down there that are, that might be a little bit hazardous, we can see some of those areas there. We do have a number of bricks out at our old park facility at six oh six Union Road, so we're able to bring those old bricks and fill in these areas. City Council's probably aware that in fiscal year twenty, the CIP shows a block-by-block replacement of those bricks on the parkade. So, we will do some of the short-term repairs and then when we get to the long-term repairs, that should last, that should last a little bit longer for us. Shingle grinding is going on right now, about nineteen hundred tons this year. They get deposited at the transfer station and then are taken out to Lake Street for grinding. We hope by the end of the week or early next week, they were all, all the shingles be taken care of. The tipping fees, if these were to go to the landfill are about sixty dollars a ton. By the time we get on processing them and transportation and selling them to asphalt companies, the city will make about twenty-five dollars a ton, so thirty to forty thousand dollars profit that the city sees from this operation. But perhaps the most important thing is these shingles do not find their way into the landfill, which is important and they're used as a byproduct for asphalt companies when they make their asphalt. Another project we cooperate with, with CFU, they have to do a number of utility repairs over the course of the year. A lot of those occur in the street right-of-ways as you see there. Since we have the ability to take care of these repairs with our staff, that is something that we complete each year. We have about twenty of those on the books this year and the cost for these panel repairs or any of these repairs is billed back to the Cedar Falls Utilities. As everyone knows, Southern Cedar Falls is growing, growing by leaps and bounds and we have a small collection area out there for our recycling materials. You can see what that looks like now on the top right and bottom right photos. We've got a little bit of a graphic there on the bottom left that shows the existing containers we see there and then the expansion that we want to complete, providing more containers for cardboard, more containers for people to utilize. So, when we get done there, we'll have about two or three times as many containers, we will make sure that that is either concrete or asphalt surface, so it's a little bit more attractive for people to utilize. University Avenue, the landscaping was installed last year, so we, our staff will be out there quite a bit this year, making sure that that survives, making sure that we're suppressing the weeds, those sorts of things. We want to make sure that that corridor looks very attractive and we're ready to take that challenge on. Last year up and, or last year up until the point when they were installed, the contractor took care of watering them. We took care of them later in the year and then that'll be our responsibility this year. A project that was referred to the city by constituent was taking a look at the, a small area down off of Eldorado Heights Trail, it's just out there on South Main. A number of cars parked there in the past, kind of using it as a trailhead, but it was a gravel surface and the request came in for the city to consider paving that. So, once the contractor completes all our work down there, we're going to work with our staff to lay out some possible, maybe two or three parking stalls. And right now, we have not identified a funding source for that, but the estimate to pay that area could be as much as twenty thousand dollars, but we will take a look at the possibility of doing that. And then, again, some of our traditional services continue. Intake repairs, crack sealing, working on, excuse me, traffic signals. Our contractors taking care of the compost facility, grinding wood mulch and those sorts of things. And of course, our fleet maintenance individuals taking care of all the vehicles we have in the city. Our trees program, planting trees, continuing with our EAB tree removals. Picture up there of a prairie burn that we did, we're going to have another one of those, we think, out on Twelfth Street by Fessant Ridge Golf Course and then continuing with some of our street repairs like box out repairs. Visitors and tourism, entered into our contract with ZLR a couple of years ago and the purpose of them, their work was to find ways to, that the city can promote themselves a little bit more, to increase our visitors and tourism opportunities. And so, we're continuing our contract with them. It's about a thousand dollars a month and right now, I, what is, the goal is to increase our Facebook ads, increase our Google presence, and there's a demographics that they're targeting this year. And again, you might not see this if you're on Facebook or on Google because all of these things appear usually if you're outside that thirty-minute, or, excuse me, thirty-minute radius of our area to try to bring people into Cedar Falls. And here's just a few of those ads that pop up on Facebook. If you type in Cedar Falls or visitors and tourism or what's going on in Cedar Falls, these are sorts of ads that will pop up and that's directly related to the money that goes into Facebook to complete those ads and move those up. So when people click on them and ask for Cedar Falls, those will pop up. Another thing we're working on at the recreation level is we have baseball dugouts. There was, there was a terrible accident down in the Davenport area a few years ago and it was related to some of the dugouts did not, were not adequate for protecting the players from either softballs coming in from the sides or being thrown with people not really paying attention to the game. So, we went through and assessed all of our facilities and we're closing off some of the openings that you see to try to minimize the number of times when a stray softball or something might get into that dugout area when people aren't prepared or protected. So here's just a couple of photos, Brock Goos with Recreation Division, worked with a local sign company, they identified ways to complete those improvements to try to reduce the number of stray softballs that might get in those areas. And here's an example of one of the areas that was completed up. This is, this is on our synthetic field up by Robinson Dresser. You can see on the left, it was a six-foot fence with an opening on the right, that was increased to an eight-foot fence with a gate. So those are sorts of improvements we're trying to do to make sure our facilities are safer for the individuals that are down and using them for softball, those sorts of So, the Park and Recommission met on March eighth and they approved any of the items that were related to the Park and Rec site of things. And that was a unanimous approval of the work plan at that time. Today, we're asking that the City Council approve our work plan for two thousand eighteen and if you have any things you'd like to add or any questions, this is, this isn't a static plan, this thing kind of gets added to and subtracted to over the course of the year as funding's available and as staffing's available. So, if there's anything that comes up that you want added to the plan, we can certainly take a look at that also. So with that, if you have any questions.
Anything for Director Riplinger, Mr. Miller?
I got a couple of things here, Mark. I'm jumping around a little bit, so I apologize for that, but Island Park, is there any way that that can turn into a permanent pond versus what we're looking at now?
I think we'd have to take a look at, I doubt it would be a permanent pond because it's going to fluctuate with the level of the river. I think probably the only thing we could look at is their, is their ability to turn it into a wetland. If the river's low for a number of months, it's going to dry out and if the course of the river's up, anytime you see that sort of groundwater there, it's usually almost at the same level of the river. We would have to look at that though, we have done at this point.
Okay. Shingle recycling, is there, it looked like in those photos that you had that there was a bunch of activity at the transfer station? Is that just hauling that stuff out of there to take it out to Lake Street or?
Yeah, I want to explain, those pictures were from two thousand and fifteen, so they all get dropped off at the transfer station and in two thousand and fifteen, we tried to grind them on site and it was, it was just not conducive, it was too dusty. So now, they just get dropped off at the transfer station at fifteen hundred bluff and then they get transported out to Lake Street. It does, the company that was grinding them started a week or so ago, they have been adding water to keep the dust down. And it's just, it's just a little bit easier area for them to do their work and for us to transport them to.
Does that happen numerous times before we hired them to come in and haul them all away or?
We don't do it every year, we wait till the bins are full. We may be rethinking that a little bit because it's a little bit messy, but this is, I think this is the second, double check with Brian, I believe this is the second time we've done it and we've ground over twenty-five hundred tons total.
Finally, North Cedar Natural Resource Project, I didn't see it on your list.
It's done, isn't it?
What's that?
Is it done?
No, it's not done.
Okay.
We've been at a standstill with the wetland area and trying to find an engineer to work with, I believe. Do you have any, to know any more information?
I know I was working with Jim Nukem on that and we were having a heck of a time trying to find an engineer that was, had the ability to put that together. And we were going through a transition with our own engineering division here and the workload was a little too much at that time to put together, so maybe that's something we can work with our engineers here to get that paperwork submitted to the Corps for that.
You could add it to the list, that would be great.
I can add that to the list, thank you.
Anything further?
Director Riplinger, I was just curious, when you talked about the expansion of the recycling site, are we able to expand the styrofoam recycling to any of the outside spaces? I know we just have it at State Street, is that an option at all?
Part of the issue with that is windy, you know, it's very difficult, sometimes people will just kind of come up and drop those peanuts in there. If we were to get the individuals to bag everything, it probably wouldn't be as big a problem, but that stuff blows around so easy, we're not, we could look at it, but we're not really thrilled about doing that because it wouldn't take too much for that stuff to blow all around the neighborhoods.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
How are we tracking the use of the fitness zone stations so we know it's worth investing in additional?
That's a good question. We know that they're being used, individuals from the industrial park that are on that lake use them. I know that Jed Smith, he has a group early in the mornings that use that, they'll run around, and the Mayor can probably expand on that a little bit because I know he takes part in that. They'll, they'll run a certain distance and do exercises on those and keep working around. We have had the Recreation Center do some promotions out there, but as far as being able to give you concrete numbers, we do not have that.
It says more anecdotally and?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything further from Mark?
Yeah, I got one more thing. Can you talk a little bit about how important the private investment is in a lot of the projects that you see, requests from citizens? I mean, the Place to Play Park, they've done an outstanding job on the I mean, the Place to Play Park, they've done an outstanding job on the private side, but how that affects project timelines?
Well, to be honest with you, I have a hard time remembering anymore any sort of project that we don't have private investment, whether it's private dollars or manpower helping with them, or promotion, those sorts of things. Shelters are generally help, they're help being paid for. Impact Outdoors actually helped build one a little while ago. The pickleball courts, I think, were in fiscal year twenty-one. Well, that group took it upon themselves to raise money. We were able to move up a request to the Black Hawk County Gaming Association, and because of that, that project moved up from a two thousand twenty-one to a two thousand nineteen project. So, as I stated, the community has been so receptive to helping. I have to say a little bit, they might drive some of the improvements. You and I have talked in the past that if the, if the Northern Cedar Falls area had to rely on city staff to complete the improvements up there in the natural resource area, you would not see what you see now probably for the next five to ten years. So, that partnership's extremely important, and like I said, it really kind of drives the ability to do a lot of the improvements we see in our park system.
Thank you.
Anything further? With Council's permission, if there's no objection, we'll just consider recommendation to move forward.
Agreed.
Final item is for bills and payroll. Is there a motion to do so, please?
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls nay. Motion carries. This concludes this evening's committee of the whole. We'll now adjourn until the seven o'clock normal time for the regular City Council.
Thanks.